We're going to open the Board of Selectmen's meeting of September 23. Meeting of the Board of Selectmen are generally recorded for transmission on both the Berlin Cable Television Access Channel and YouTube. Your voice and image may be recorded. And we are working on a public comment policy, which maybe we will go over at this time at another meeting. So we have approval of minutes, August 19th, September 9th, and September 16th. Any questions, comments?
Motion to approve. Seconded.
Okay. On September 9th, Mary, I think you can cross out Kristen and Kristin because they're listed below.
They show up in the present.
I think they're listed twice. Am I right?
Oh, yeah. Yep, yep, yep.
And then on August 19th, we were doing suggestions for the Fire Chief job description within 30 minutes of boards. I don't know what that means. Didn't mean anything to me. But those bullets under the job description for...
So you just, what did you just do, the 19th?
August 19th, it says in the bullets under the job description for the Fire Chief, within 30 minutes of boards.
Oh, no. Borders.
Borders of Berlin? Is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Borders of Berlin.
Yeah, I was just going to say Berlin. But I didn't know what that meant, so just to make it clearer.
Does it, it says borders of Berlin?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, that's the only suggestions I had. So we've got a motion and a second with those changes. Is that all right with both of you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
We have correspondence, a letter of appreciation to the Highway Department's summer interim.
So Dave was at the Board's, through the chair, Dave was at the Board's meeting last week explaining the program, the job training program, where he worked with a student this past summer, and the student did a great job. And so the Board requested that a letter of appreciation be sent to the student that did the work here and the Bay State Roads Program. So we have a letter here from the Board expressing appreciation for the program and the service provided by the student.
Is he also with Keefe Tech?
He's with Keefe Tech.
I wonder if a letter should, copy should go to them, too?
Their copies, as you see.
Okay. Oops. Okay. All right. Thank you. General public comment?
I don't think they count as general public.
Well, you have to ask. Is that correct?
None tonight.
No department head updates. So we're on to the Town Administrator update?
Yes. Okay. I marked a few things to pull out from my report this week. The Building Commissioner preliminary interview team held interviews for four candidates for Building Commissioner last week and unanimously decided to recommend that two move forward to final interviews with the Board. So those are scheduled for next Monday, the 30th. I think it's at 7:15 and 7:35 if I'm not mistaken, but they'll be at the start of your meeting. Let's see. I am working on the CPA insert to be included with real estate tax bills. The Administrative Finance Team met last week, and so we're just kind of refining that. It's going to be a two-sided insert to go with the real estate tax bills, just explaining what CPA is, and then the reverse side will show the finances, the dollars and tax impacts and things like that, or bill impacts. We are, I followed up with KP Law regarding the Board's request for a workshop in October. I just received a response today from Lauren Goldberg that she will be coming to do it, so we just need to pick dates. We're thinking of, there were a few Thursdays in October that we wanted to try, or an alternate date might be October 21st, the night, that's a Monday night, the night the Board's not meeting because you have coffee, coffee talk that Wednesday. So I'm going to throw a few dates out to her and see what we land on. Council on Aging is having its regular monthly meeting tomorrow at 4:00 PM. Council on Aging Director has received responses from the entire, the entire council, so there should be quorum tomorrow, and there'll be lots of discussion. I suggested that the topic of Council on Aging Director job description, the van policies and procedures, the van driver job description, things that have been on hold for a while, go back for discussion. I will be at the meeting. We are, Molly, the Principal Assessor, and I have a discussion tomorrow with our potential consultant on solar pilot negotiations. We're looking right now at a mix of funding from available appropriations in order to pay the consulting fee and move forward with negotiations on the pilot agreement. Dave, the Highway Superintendent, Police Chief, and I met with Sujatha and Wami from CMR PC today, Transportation Planners. We had a really good meeting. There are so many funding opportunities out there for infrastructure and building projects now. We just need to wrap our heads around what we're capable of putting together and how quickly we can move. So we talked about three different potential funding opportunities. The first one was Safe Routes to Schools. It's the only current state funding opportunity that doesn't require a town match, so we wouldn't have to pay for design engineering. And we're looking at the possibility of doing sidewalk connections from the school up to the new ADA sidewalks into the center of town. So making it safer for students to walk, cross 62, head to the library, 19 Carter. And that was one of the priority projects on our Complete Streets Plan, so we get bonus points. So we're going to try that. We've got, we've got a meeting that we're setting up with the MassDOT Safe Routes representative and the principal at the elementary school to get us all on the same page. The second one was Complete Streets itself. We are not going to be able to submit an application in time for this round because the applications are due next week, and we haven't had any design engineering work done. But we are going to find a way to try to proceed with an application submission by May 1st, so in the spring. So what we're going to have to do, and I should announce this now, we're going to have to find out how we, how we determine programmatic funding mechanisms for design engineering. We're going to need to have year-on-year funding through some funding source or, or a mix of funding sources, whether it's free cash, mitigation funds, to actually do design engineering work for infrastructure projects that would improve public safety and, and the roads. So those, we're going to start looking at funding for Complete Streets for a possible application on May, on May 1st, or by May 1st. And the final one is the Transportation Improvement Program. Those are for big, major projects. So we're looking possibly at doing some work on 62 from Pleasant Street all the way down to Five Corners, or a mix of the intersections from Pleasant Street over to, over to the Bullard House or down to Linden, and then tackle that five, what is it called, Five Corners intersection by itself. So those are going to be big projects, and those also need design engineering work. We actually have to commit, we have to have 25% of the design engineering cost paid in order for the state to look at the project seriously and keep us on the, on the plan. I have received a now municipal vulnerability preparedness, so we've, we've now been hearing regularly about the MVP program. And I have received a template from CMR PC to be provided to certain local officials, boards, and committees to express their support for proceeding with MVP designation. So I'm going to be working on that template tomorrow and providing information to the various boards, committees, and local officials that might be considered key stakeholders in this process. So we'll see if we can start drumming up some support for this, and I would serve as the local project coordinator. We have, we are actually going for an ADA Self-Assessment Planning Grant. I've been working with Connor at CMR PC on an application. We stand to be awarded over $22,000 in order to have a consultant come in and go through our facilities and recreation areas and other town properties for ADA accessibility. That could also be tied to funding down the road, so we're going to proceed with that. And let's see what we've got here. I attended Nishoba Regional Dispatch District's Administrative Board meeting last week. I summarized some things we discussed at the meeting, and we also discussed the start of their budget process, where the Finance Committee for the district is going to be meeting on October 9th. Operations Committee will meet on October 15th, and then our next meeting will be October 16th. So all meetings will be, will be happening around the same time. We should have a better idea of what the district is looking for as far as services and equipment. And then finally, I have a meeting scheduled with Jeff Zangay and Bob Conroy from the Berlin-Boilston Regional School District, just to talk about ongoing communications and keeping the lines of communication open, potential partnerships, potential project opportunities that we have in common. I've got that coming up on September 30th. And that's it for today.
Very good.
There's more in writing, but...
You did the Reader's Digest version?
I did, I did. But there's one, one additional thing. I did provide the Board this week a, a sample of a budget memo that I've done in the past, so you can take a look at that.
All right. Well, we'll move on to old business and approval of the one-day beer and wine license and special event permit for the Berlin food pantry. So no one is here to present on this tonight, but it has passed all the local inspections. The only one we're waiting on is the Building Commissioner's inspection of the facility itself tomorrow. So once we get through that, he'll be able to sign off, and so I ask that the Board's vote tonight on approval be contingent on the, the Building Commissioner's inspection. Okay.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
There you go.
Get out there and support them.
It's really a fun event.
It is.
Don't want to taste it?
Yeah.
I bet. Thank you. All right. Policies, policies and procedures, the agenda procedures.
The agenda procedures are back before the Board in draft form. On page three, we made an update based on the Board's last discussion about document distribution or providing the documents we, in Google Drive. So on page three, there is, there is an actual procedure that would require the documents to be placed into Google Drive at least three, three business days prior to the meeting. And it goes on. Mary did, I thought Mary did a good job writing this, this paragraph or adding this, this information. Everything else is the same.
Any comments or questions?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Okay, let me just look. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Good job, Mary.
Yeah, really thank you both for pulling this together.
This is a biggie. And use of legal counsel. This is basically the same as the last one we...
It's basically the same. This one actually includes a form, though, that's shown on the back. And the reason for the minor modifications to this, or the modifications to this, is that it would assure that a requester for use of legal counsel wouldn't assume that they can go back over and over and over again to legal. They'd actually check in and make sure that they're approved to go back to legal counsel for further...
Right.
For further advice.
Been there, done that.
Well, and this, too, stops the pylon. Oh, we're going to talk to legal about A. Oh, well, I have B, C, D, E, F, and then all of a sudden the bill is a bazillion dollars when not anticipated yet.
This would, this would kind of rein that in. It's intended to.
Okay. So do I hear a motion to approve?
Yep, I have one quick question.
Okay.
The Board of Selectment Chair shall authorize any requested communications between Board of Selectment members and legal counsel. Since we can't actually talk directly to whoever's chair, I don't see how that works.
Would you like to add the Town Administrator to facilitate this?
Where are you?
Oh, under procedure.
Under procedure. It says the Board of Selectment Chair shall authorize any requested communication between Board of Selectment members and legal counsel, except if we're asking, we would have to be here at a meeting anyways, so the Board may as well approve it, and if not, we have to have another way to do it because we can't actually talk to each other outside of a meeting.
Well, it could be at a board meeting.
At a meeting.
And if we're going to do that, I would prefer that the whole Board approve access to counsel then.
And typically, Board members wouldn't be contacting counsel anyway. It would generally be through the chair anyway, so.
Right.
At, at a board meeting?
Yeah.
So then that could be revised to say...
And I'm fine if you put both in, that we can facilitate it through the Town Administrator or approve it at a meeting or whatever, but I don't think this will work.
Would it, would it be workable if we just removed the word "chair"? The Board of Selectmen shall authorize any requested communication between Board of Selectmen members and legal counsel, except that the chair has the authority to, to speak, with notice, to speak with legal counsel.
Okay.
What if it's an urgent issue? Let's say it's Tuesday, something pops up, and we're not meeting till the following Monday. Tuesday, there's a holiday. I really need to get to legal.
I could, I...
Does it go to you?
Yeah, I could, I could do that. Yeah, I could do that as the Board's agent.
Okay.
So either or?
Yeah, I mean, if we can approve it...
Either the Board approves or it goes through Margaret.
Right.
Depending upon urgency.
Okay.
Okay, so I just want to be clear. How do we want that sentence to read, then?
Board of Selectmen or the Town Administrator shall authorize...
Oh, I wouldn't authorize Board members, though. Is that what you're asking? I would actually do it, I think, as the Board's agents.
Fine.
Or the Town Administrator as the Board's agent.
Okay.
Someone comes to us, someone comes to Margaret and says, "I need to talk to counsel." Not only are they handed this, this side of the document, but they're also handed this side? Is there any type of acknowledgement to say, "Oh," because I like your, the enforcement down here, Margaret, again, in playing devil's advocate, because that's what I do best, you know, outside of policy and procedure, maybe personally responsible for payment. I want to avoid the, "I didn't know."
Okay. So I think what we could do, this could be fairly simple, too, because the request is submitted, we could do an acknowledgement right at the bottom of that request form.
That they've read the policy and that they understand.
That they've read the policy and understand. Yeah.
Okay.
So with those changes, does the Board wish to approve the document?
Aye.
That was a motion.
Oh, yeah, I'm good with it. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And moving on to the drug and alcohol-free workplace policy.
Motion to approve.
This adds the definition of employee. Thank you, Mary.
Yes. I was, that's what I had...
I couldn't remember where we left off on that.
I know, I, I actually, that was one of my comments, was to broaden that definition, and now it's broadened. Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments?
Personnel Committee took this up and approved it last Wednesday evening, so I'm going to be sure to give them this, this markup so that they can accept the amendment.
Okay. So do I hear a motion to...
Lisa did.
Okay, I didn't hear.
I second. Well, I was waiting because there was chat going on, so.
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
And the public comment guidelines? Any comments or questions?
I don't believe I received any comments on this one over the course of the last week, so.
I think it was just where are we going to post it and how are people going to know.
And I think we figured that out, I was going to post it out there, and there would be handouts.
Yep. And I can mention it.
Somehow in the introduction.
Right.
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that like a, is that a different font?
Is it just yours?
Oh, maybe just mine. It's on the...
Nope. That's a different font. That's one word that's in a different font.
Like, yeah, it's a different font, or it's bolded.
Yeah, open. It's in the paragraph before the bullets start.
Just sticks right out there.
Now it does.
Just through the chair?
Yep.
We're just going to add, I see that the, the Board of Selectmen's approved date and Personnel Committee's approved date's not on this drug and alcohol-free workplace policy, so we'll be adding that, just for your information.
All right. Did we approve this document? All right. Board questions and comments? Hello.
I'll let Lisa go first.
I actually, just, home day is this Saturday, and hopefully everybody will attend.
Last call to play cornhole. I don't want to be the only one standing over there tossing...
We will take day of, though, if you, if you really can't get your, your stuff in. I don't think we have eight yet. And I have to ask Kristen, but I don't think we have eight.
I think there'll be a lot of people who want to play once they get there and see if that's there.
There you go.
All right. Hey.
I have three.
Okay.
So I did post on the SA Farm issue that came through like late, late today. I did get that up on Berlin Residents Unite, and the post, when I left the house, I checked to still awaiting approval on Berlin Neighbors Connect to try and get it out. I realized it's last minute. I did call Mrs. Chandler, because she was kind of the one who started this, and explained what it was. Chris was kind enough to send me her email, so hopefully Mrs. Chandler can now spread the news. If they can't get there tomorrow because it's short notice, at least there's an email and a mail opportunity. So got that one out.
Berlin United?
There's another one, Berlin Residents United, that's not as tightly controlled as Berlin Neighbor Connect.
Hmm.
Yeah. So, Mary, I think you put a letter together, the shout-out to the Mass DCR for cleaning up that building on Linden Street?
Yeah, it's in the signature form.
It's right here.
That's awesome. I did, I saw them on Saturday when I drove down Linden. They were out there with their trucks, they were getting ready, and then when I drove down this morning...
All gone.
All gone. The nasty side was gone, and where someone had drawn something like a cute ghost or something, that's all gone. But that building is pristine, so I asked the people of town, kind of like, you know, you see something, say something, let's try and keep that building as clean as possible so we don't have to do this again. But thank you to the committee that came out and do this, because they didn't have to. So I appreciate that. All right. And then the last one, a month or so ago, I had approached the Selectmen about an item that I'd received from Brenna Ewing regarding getting credits for kids in school to help out the seniors. Eh, not a lot of support, so took it upon myself, accepted challenge, went to Holly. She actually provided a website to me that's Sterling, that I forwarded to Margaret. Sterling is already doing this. And then I searched around and did a quick search on the interweb and found out that there's a school in Iowa who does it. Ithaca, New York does it. So the whole point is to try and get kids in the high schools involved with helping out seniors, potentially maybe physically challenged folks in town, with raking, weeding, shoveling, those types of items. So Holly and I visited Tohonto this morning, met with Superintendent Zangay and Principal Diane...
Tousari.
Thank you. I couldn't remember her last name. Tohonto is fully on board with this. They see it as a community service opportunity for their kids. They see it as also helping to boost resumes for kids that are going to school, that need, they're going to college, that need to show community support.
Community service.
Yep. We talked that maybe if we're doing it for Berlin, we could do it for Boyleston. Principal Diane, her only comment is that she wanted longevity in this project, that she didn't want it to be like, "Woo-hoo, let's get out there and do it for the first year, and then it dies." So we know we have a long way to go. Our goal is spring, to have this set up and running. So I met with Margaret earlier today, did a pop-in. She's going to help me figure out liability, insurance, quarry. Once we get that going, then I'm thinking that chips will start to fall into place, that we can reach out to our rec committee, maybe we reach out to the rec committee in Boyleston. We reach out to the Lions Club, we reach out to the Boy Scouts, we just start spreading word on how we're going to do this. Highway, you know, we're going to need their support because we may need a building to house all the hose and the rakes and the shovels. But Sterling has an excellent program that I'm thinking we can borrow quite a bit from in terms of, here's the form that, you know, a senior might call in and say, "I need help with X." Here's, you know, the form that a parent will say, "I will drive." Here's how it's coordinated with the kids to do this. We're not asking it to be forever and ever. Five weekends in the spring, couple hours, five weekends in the fall, which are your big hit days. So we're going to Asabet tomorrow. I fully expect Superintendent Hul to say yes, because I'm going to tell him, "Well, Tohonto's doing it," so. So maybe there's an opportunity to bond with all the towns that support Asabet as well. So we're, you know, Holly and I started just as this. I can see it doing this and expanding. But I know it's not going to be an overnight thing. There'll be a lot of work that will be involved in it. We'll need a lot of help from a lot of people, but proud that Tohonto has stepped up to say, "Yeah, we're on board."
Good.
Yes. Very happy. Very happy. Those are my three.
All right. I had one. Hang on a minute. Margaret, when are we going to invoke the federal background checks on our licensed applicants? Do you have that on your radar?
Mary is working on that policy and procedure now. So I think we've got a little more work to do on it. Right now, we're really focusing on a, on a potential change of manager, and we want to be prepared for that, for the Board. For general license renewals and new licenses, I, we need to be, I don't want to say we need to proceed with caution, but we need to take every step purposefully because we want to be sure that the Board has clear instructions on what it's going to require from this point out. We have, we have comprehensive alcohol licensing policies that we need to prepare. So we want to tackle this one first with a change of manager, and then... So we want to tackle this one first with a change of manager and then move toward regular renewals and licensing.
All right, just wanted to make sure it's on the radar.
Mm-hmm, it definitely is.
Okay. And we do have need for an executive session to approve our executive session meeting minutes of August 19th and September 16th. So that's Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7. Do I hear a roll call, roll call vote?
We will only be coming back to adjourn?
Yes. Thank you.
West Lake, aye.
Keefe, aye.
Stone, aye.
All right.
Thanks, Mr. B.